Back to open session.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. A non-roll call vote, but a vote nonetheless. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Aye! Alright, here we go. Oh my gosh, I'm so iPaded out here, people. iPod. I'm using a different device tonight and I'm trying to mouse. It's okay, I will, I will get there. Feel like a, never mind. I feel like me, let's just move along here, shall we? Alright, um, does anyone have adjustments to the order of business, any proposals? Hearing none, we'll keep the agenda as is. Any public appearances tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as is?
So moved.
We need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dean. This is a roll call or non-roll call?
No, this is-
Just a vote, alright. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Alright, motion carries, the consent agenda is approved. Which takes us to item H, recognitions.
Okay, I'd like to begin, um, the, and the consent agenda you just approved under, um, resignation retirement, we did have a late, uh, retirement. Uh, Beth Hornig, who has been a reading teacher, um, at Winifred School, um, has decided to retire and again, we certainly wish Beth the best and we are very grateful for her, uh, service to Winifred School this week.
Absolutely. And I just-
Maybe talk about wine?
Oh, wow.
No, I'm gonna miss him, he's really fun. He's gotten a lot of grants and done a lot of neat things with our science kids. All of our teachers have, there's no question. But to take him to Chili and then gets moved out.
Right.
Everybody, done some neat things.
Yeah, that'll be an exciting breakfast, right, for the end of the school year. I just briefly wanted to mention that senior recognition night last week was outstanding and I was impressed with the number of awards and scholarships and the legacy that's built, um, in our communities. Um, several families, generation after generation, um, in Cottage Grove and Manona and, um, it was just really impressive to hear the people, um, talk and present and all of that, so enough, but it was, it was a great night. So I appreciate that effort. Alright, anything else? That takes us to I, correspondence and announcements.
Okay, on your board docs, we actually listed four different announcements, um, you've been, probably received these a couple of different times, but they're really important things, so I think it's worth mentioning again tonight. Um, so first of all, MG twenty-one graduation is Thursday, June first, and again, of course, all board members are invited. We can attend, it's at Manona Community Center at seven o'clock that evening. Next, Winifred Grove High School graduation is on Sunday, June fourth, um, at, in high school gym at one o'clock. Again, board members, um, can and in fact are expected to participate if you can attend, if you have conflicts, if you have already. I, I think we've already caught up with everyone on, on that. Um, and then our end, end of year rec, staff recognition breakfast on Friday, June ninth. Again, that's, uh, at seven thirty AM, a breakfast program where we'll have breakfast for all staff employees in, in the district, uh, for all employees, I should say, and then we have a recognition program following, um, in the auditorium. And again, uh, board members are welcome and, um, and, and again encouraged to attend if you can that morning. So we're recognizing all of our retirees as well as a number of employees with different years of service. Um, and it's really, uh, and we actually generally have, uh, some retirees come back and join us that morning as well, it's really a funny event. And then the last thing is, is, um, uh, something different, um, our MG twenty-one students have been partnering with, uh, City of Manona on a project and, um, creating a mural. And, um, and so they are gonna have that dedication on Saturday, June tenth. Um, and, um, I don't see the time listed on here, but, um-
Oh, oh, it's noon?
Oh, I bet it's on the attachment, do you know?
Yes, it's at noon, I'm sorry.
There it is, yep, at noon, thank you. And, uh, at the Manona well number three.
Yep.
At the corner of Raymond, Raywood, Rowan and West Broadway, but, uh, um, wow, just one of those projects that, you know, um, very impressive and as is most things that are MG twenty-one since its involvement, so if you happen to be available on that Saturday, I'll put it down.
It's up.
Yeah, it's up.
And it is in, and we're at a absolutely incredible, it looks like you're looking across the skyline. I cannot believe how beautiful it is.
I saw pictures, I haven't been there.
Oh, no, oh, you have to do, well, you haven't been going downtown lately.
Can't visit.
You can't, it's absolutely beautiful. Beautiful. Amazing.
Anything else for announcements? Alright, that takes us to administrative reports and our Director of Business Services.
Alright, um, I have two items to report on tonight. Uh, the first one we will, um, report out on is open enrollment updates. So the open enrollment, um, application period has ended as of the end of April. And so I put together a chart just to show you, um, the numbers that we received. Back in January, you approved as a board thirty-three spots. And you can see that we've received a hundred and ninety-two applicants, uh, applications to fill those whopping thirty-three spots that we have available. Um, in addition to that, the last column is total open enrollment applications that we received for students that are actually already attending. Those students would be accepted outside of those thirty-three. Those are our students that have moved out of the districts, uh, prior, outside of the open enrollment window, have tuition waivers, and per board policy, um, those kids are rolled up when we do this and so, um, those kids will ultimate, ultimately, uh, receive an open, um, uh, approval letter from us as well. So the ones, areas where we have, uh, more applicants than places, they will be, there will be a waiting list. And we are in that process right now where we have sent letters last Friday notifying individuals of who got accepted and then the placement for waiting lists, and now it's just a ongoing thing and we'll continue to update our enrollments. And if we have enrollment changes or something like that, then we potentially can come back in July, um, and, and update our enrollment numbers.
Jared, can I just, so, again, you need to look at this because we received six times as many applications as we have spaces.
Yes.
You know, I know it's always hot, but, um, thank you guys again for all that you do for us. Make the places where people wanna come.
Thank you, Dean.
Uh, Jared, when you, uh, select these, they have to be done by, at random, right?
Correct.
Drawn from a hat, so to speak?
Yep, a random draw.
And so you must do it by grade level then, right?
Uh, yes, so, uh, just to talk briefly of the process, is that we actually have to randomly draw which grade levels we do because we allow siblings, so if a sibling gets in and there's a sibling on the list, then they move up the list. They don't have to go through that random draw unless there's more. Uh, but we do randomly put them in the hat.
So siblings are the only one that has, has, uh, some priority, right?
Yes.
Or if you lived here before.
Or if you, so the, the column on the far right, those twenty kids, those twenty kids will automatically be accepted because they've already lived here, they continued their enrollment and they just moved out. Um, but if you have not attended the district and applied for open enrollment, the only priority that you do get is if there's a sibling that's already attending.
And so the twenty or so people who want to get into high school, you just send them a letter and say, "We had no openings, so thank you very much."
Yes.
Dumb question, but why would people try to open it up as a senior?
Should I give them the list?
I can answer that.
The music program, the math program, the science program, the sports.
I mean, what are you gonna get out of that, really?
Well, not to speak for those individuals, but oftentimes it is, perhaps they, they are struggling or they feel that, you know, a change would be better, you know, for them and, and, um, now, we don't generally have seats here available for upperclassmen. In my previous district, we did, and we had a number of students that the transfer was a good change for them and for whatever reason, and they transferred their junior, senior year. More, it's rare for the senior year.
Right, I've seen five people.
Yeah.
What if you go to, can you go back and forth between MG twenty-one and Winifred Grove?
Um, you can ch, yeah, yeah, I wouldn't say back and forth, but yeah, we do have students who are started at the regular high school, they go to MG twenty-one, at some point decide, "No, I'd rather go back," and so that has happened, yes.
And that's not open enrollment?
Correct, that's just internal, okay.
Dean.
Uh, Jared, just, there's something else for me. Are the new, are the applicants already in attendance? Do those fill the new slots?
Nope.
Okay, so-
So really, you'll have fifty, if everybody accepts fifty-three.
Okay, gotcha.
Because when we rolled everybody forward in January, they were already in a seat.
They're already in a seat.
So they were already part of the calculation.
So we have three in fourth grade and there will be another three open spots?
Yes.
Alright, uh, the second report out is, uh, an update on our two thousand seventeen capital projects. On the board back end, I believe it was February, approved a total budget of six hundred thousand dollars. At that time, we had also came forth and selected, uh, CG Schmidt to be our contractor to help us go out and bid and, um, work through that. Um, what I've done here is just printed out or put together a list of the final projects that will actually be moving forward. Uh, you'll notice that of all the projects, um, all except for two have been identified on that facility study that we worked with back in June of two thousand and fifteen. So things that we have shared out with the community during our operational referendum. Uh, we obviously had a list that went well beyond the six hundred thousand dollars, so we worked with the building principals to be able to identify priorities within their buildings and that will continue to help us build our five-year, um, continuous, uh, maintenance plan or capital projects. But I wanted to give you an update on each of the buildings and which projects that they are doing at there. Dean?
Dean.
Do we, uh, uh, because Schmidt was involved with our study plan, uh, are, i- is that why we use them for these, these maintenance projects, or are they bid and they happen to get it, or how does that-
Yep, so, um, we actually issued an RFP, um, to select our contract man, our construction manager for summer projects and they were the ones that came in with the lower bid, so it wasn't necessarily a, a, a relationship from the previous study. I mean, obviously, they understand what's happening in the district, um, so their bid came in lower and so these projects are not necessarily all being performed by CG Schmidt, there's a combination of local contractors. So what CG Schmidt's doing is they are really the general contractor, filling in the gap to make sure that we're meeting the deadlines and they do have some part of, you know, some labor, um, portion of it, but not everything is being performed by CG Schmidt. They're just our construction manager.
Thank you.
Susan.
Um, and, and I appreciate the fact that as that process happened, Jared, you kept us well informed as a board. We actually approved that additional contract. You talked to us about the RFPs, you talked to us about who came in, you talked about the cost that came in.
Mm-hmm.
And it was my impression that you felt pretty comfortable about the work that's been done and how this has gone.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Jared, I just had one question, and that is, the two projects for the high school were not on the original facility study.
Mm-hmm.
So how, how did those rise to the top for the high school?
Yep, um, so those items, uh, so we took the facility study and then we also met with the building principals. And so what the facility study really walked through and identified gaps that we had on maintenance side of things. And so the two items at the high school is the locker and the science lab, so those were things that wouldn't have been necessarily identified with the continuous growth, uh, that we have in the district, the lockers needed to be replaced. Uh, we had a number of students that were sharing, so this would get us to have one for every student. And then obviously, for curriculum-wise, um, we needed an extra lab for the science program.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. And that takes us to our superintendent's report.
Okay, alright, so if you recall, um, as we began this first year of our new strategic plan, we said that we would do three check-ins a year, um, and this is the second one. And again, this is just a running list of things that we said were part of our action plan, it's not the actual PDSA. You'll see there's not, you know, data attached to this, but it's just, uh, more of, uh, an update to show what we're on track with, what we're still working on. And so I do wanna again emphasize that as we wrap up the school year, the final report will look much different than this. Where you'll, uh, will combine with some of the work that our principals have done at their schools, with their student data, as well as the data we're looking at at the district level, what we've accomplished and then what things that we wanna continue working on in the next year. But, so this is just, um, I, I gave you, you know, a similar thing a couple of months ago after kind of the first third of the year. Even though we're towards the end of the school year, um, you know, we started putting this together, you know, a month or a month and a half ago and, uh, and the expectation would be that the year-end report would come in August, uh, to the board. So we will wrap up with a data retreat with our entire administrative team in June. We'll be compiling, again, looking at the school recruitment plans, looking at the specific, um, plans at the district level and compiling into a complete report to gr, present to the board then in August. So, uh, but with that, if there's any specific things on here that you have questions or would like clarifications, we'd like to answer those.
So, explain to me again, yeah, so, um, some of these, like the one-year SMART goals, um, that, um, Chris and Lisa are working on about, it said by June thirtieth, three districts, that kind of thing. And there's a targeted completion date.
Yep.
Could we add a column that just says, "Report out to board"? I mean, just so that we could, as, as things that have a one-year targeted date, we could just get, you know, three slides in each of those things.
Yep, so you're gonna get, at, at the end of that year one-
Which you're talking about, obviously.
We'll specifically look at each of those specific SMART goals, as you mentioned, because there's data mentioned there that said, you know, here's our goal to have in some cases, you know, this much growth and this much change. And so we'll report out, how did we do?
Okay.
This is more the process, what are we doing to try to achieve those goals?
Okay. And you're thinking we have to be ours?
Yes.
Okay, good, thanks.
I still think that the goal related to test scores is a scary thing for me. Just like to go and recognize, really?
Well, and that, and that's a good point, keep in mind, not all the data are, are test scores. In fact, a lot of it is not. And, you know, one of the things that, um, Nicole had in hers was satisfaction, you know, scored based on like staff surveys. And that's something that we wanna expand upon. Those are good data that we can show, that, that we know are important in, in what we're doing. So I think that's, we have to be careful and I, I won't get to detail, that's, you know, but I, I know when, when Lisa and Krista reported out on that, that they're very cognizant, that it's not just about trying to look at scores. Yeah. Yeah, but I, I only think we don't ignore it either, I think it's just, but it's a piece only.
Jeff, may I ask quickly and then Dean, um, you can have the floor. Do you have, um, other pieces maybe connected to the test data that you'd like to hear about? Or, or just-
I, yeah, I don't find much value in the test, I mean, personally, high stakes standardized tests, it doesn't have much value. I'm more into, I mean, if they graduate or are they gonna go after that, you know, how, you know, what do we do in school? What are we offering, how are, you know, are they taking the language, there's, I mean, there's a million things that, I think, tell you a better student than what they did on that day, that morning, you know, taking the tests.
Yeah.
Thank you. Dean, thanks.
I would take a little bit of, Bridget, you're concerned about tests. High stakes tests are, I, I think are, are a concern. If, if there's big payoff, you know, the superintendent, going to be big salary increases that are, you know, that those kind of rewards, I think, have eventually shown, uh, you know, real corruption in some of the big, big school district. But I think that, uh, testing, that, um, uh, testing that can be considered to be formative in, in most cases, to, to say, "How are we doing and what can we change?" I think are, is an appropriate use of, of tests and they're used in, in Finland and other places, uh, in a formative sense. And, uh, because I, I don't think we, uh, we, we don't look at, at our principals' performance in terms of test scores or teachers when they're, they're evaluated. And when you, when you get to that type of thing, I think that's what your concern is well founded, yeah.
Well, I have to my son help.
What?
I have to my son help and I feel bad I didn't have my daughter around, so.
Well, then, then, then those teachers are losing the data on your daughter to bet, to best serve them.
Um, I had just one question that was, and this may be premature, did any of the five buckets, any of the five groups, um, find that they wanted to revisit any of their SMART goals in any way? I'm just curious if there was any, you know-
We, yeah, at this point, um, we just asked each of the individuals to update, you know, their plan. I think at the end of the year one, absolutely, we will, so the, so I guess to answer your question directly, no, we didn't change our actual SMART goal, we did make some revisions to the action steps along the way. Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright, thank you. And that takes us to board reports and we'll start with the Winifred Grove Education Foundation.
Okay, so, uh, Secure's not able to be with us tonight, but I can report out on, on the May meeting. And just really, uh, two things I think that might be of, of interest, you know, to the board. Uh, first of all, um, in the past, the foundation at times has served as a path through for, um, for donations and, and gifts and so on, for organizations that don't necessarily have, I will see three, I will see-
One.
One status. Um, and Winifred, PTO is one of those. Well, there's no need to actually, for them to serve as a pa, path, Jared can work with them directly through Fund Twenty-One with gifts. Um, and so they initially was a request from Winifred PTO and, uh, uh, but we resolved that and, and we have everyone on the same page, we have, you know, excellent communication. And in fact, they actually did apply for nonprofit status. It's become much easier, it used to be a pretty cumbersome thing to have to go through that. So, um, so I think, I feel really good about where the foundation is and working with Jared about how to handle gifts and, uh, that was a challenge for us a couple of years ago and I think the communication's been great and, and everyone's now on the same page. So that was part of the discussion. And then, uh, one of the other major discussions that we had was, um, about the donation the foundation received a year ago from Dick Brandt, and I think that had been reported on earlier. A very generous donation of, of fifty thousand dollars, uh, to the foundation and with a request that it be used specifically, um, for high school students. Um, and so we've been working with our high school staff, administration about how can we really utilize this gift? It doesn't have to be spent in one year. And so we looked at the work that we're doing with ACP and how perhaps that might tie in. Um, and so at the foundation, uh, meeting, we had a really nice discussion about, you know, what some of those things are that we're looking at and, and the board members were, were great as well, talking about, you know, their experiences and, and, and so I think everyone left there feeling really good that if we can really do something positive to benefit students and, uh, so I've been working with, uh, Paul Ross and, and Chris Langer is administrator that, that, uh, heads up the ACP team and as well has some great ideas working with Lisa and Krista as well. So, um, when we have a plan in place, that's something we definitely report out to the board. Like, this has a really generous gift and we wanna make sure it gets put to, to good use, so.
Dean, can you just define ACP in case the audience-
Oh, sure. Thank you, yeah, so ACP, uh, academic and career planning. And I think you re, received, uh, you know, a, a report from Lisa in the past, but if recall, that's something that our school and all schools in Wisconsin have been working on the last couple of years and we're expecting the full implementation beginning, you know, next year.
There also is, you may, didn't I, Lisa, didn't I send that to you recent, there's also a group at the university that is reaching out into the school systems and is exploring, doing more of that. It's similar, I think, to the concept of universitie.
Okay.
Um, so I, I said, I don't know that it's an opportunity at all, but it was a huge article written up, so.
Thank you.
Whatever we can do to help those kids.
Alright, thank you. Um, and our next report, I believe, is the Policy Committee and Susan Manning, are you-
I-
I know, I wasn't sure if we're speaking it or we're just looking at the document, I wasn't sure.
Sure.
Yeah, or-
Basically, um, Susan had posted the report from the Policy Committee in board docs and our minutes are already posted, so you can see what we did and what we've talked about. Again, the minutes are absolutely excellent, I encourage you to, to read them, they can say tell exactly what we looked at, kind of what we talked about and, um, whether or not there's a change. So basically, we discussed review, um, fifty-six, ten point of one, which is the alternative expulsion procedures and the data's following up with some legal, um, counsel advice on some of the questions that we had. Um, then we did discussion review of, um, zero-one, zero-zero definitions, um, because we needed to define ex officio better because we had some inconsistency there. And we looked at Board President, oh-one, seven, one point one, um, because there's language about the ex officio role in there as well. There's some question about voting or not voting and, um, so we wanna make sure the policy's consistent. And the, the same issue was in the job description for the superintendent about, they both, the language states they serve ex officio members of work committees. And then we were also looking at a clerical correction to personal communication devices. Again, it takes us a lot of time to do this stuff, sometimes what looks like a little bit of work. And oh-one, fifty, one point two, required people academic standards, uh, agenda, um, we made some clerical changes. We've been looking at all the Naola updates, so just when we think we're about where we need to be, they come in with like thirty updates and we get this great big huge packet and we kind of have to start all, all over again. And then there's some Naola tech updates, which we are planning to do in the next committee meeting, which is scheduled for the seventh and Jeff is gonna come and help us through that. Um, so, um, the plan is that any policies that are not coming to the board tonight are still maybe rebarbequed.
Yeah.
Thank you. Dean?
Just a question on the superintendent job description. It seems to me if, if you change that, that, that affects, that, that affects the, the, some of the criteria for evaluation and that sort of thing. Was that changed and will that affect-
Sure.
Well, the first thing I'll just say is, because it's a board report, we can't actually discuss an item in the board report, which is kind of frustrating and I apologize for that. But because it's a question, we can probably take it as a question and be comfortable with that, right?
I, I think so, and it is, and Susan did have it in her written report, so I think it's a clarification.
Okay, good, okay. Yeah.
The only thing that's in that policy with regard to the job description was there, it states that the superintendent shall serve as an ex officio, um, member of all committees. And it was a clarification that, well, that's not meant to be a voting member of those committees. And so that's the only adjustment that's gonna be recommended, but it's not up for tonight on the agenda. I think the, the expectation will be at the next meeting, it'll be, come to the board for, you know, review, but tha, that's it.
Yeah, I just-
Yep.
We did get into it.
I didn't know I couldn't talk about that.
Well, it, part of it is when we do the first read on it, then we want you to talk about it a lot, this is all.
Okay.
But, but we did, um, start, we did review that. And everything that I just read about is still gonna come to the board. We just started review on it and then started our to-do list. If you look at the minutes, you'll see that the to-do list is still really long.
Dean?
I have a report, but it's not on the agenda.
I'm sorry, we're-
Comment?
Uh, I still wanna talk about policy. Before we move on?
Yes.
Can, are you on, moving on to another topic?
No, I, uh, we had board reports, but, uh, I was assigned to the new teacher committee.
Can, can we talk about policy before we move on to that?
Certainly.
This, this came up last year and it wasn't resolved, which is, the question of, and the language is not, is not clear in our policy, the question of whether or not, uh, the, uh, Board Chair can serve as a regular member of a committee if we so choose. And given the fact that we only have seven members of the board and the committees can be, you know, difficult to staff, um, I would recommend that we change the, the policy to con, to clarify that although the, the chair can be an ex officio member, the chair can also be, um, uh, when it's appropriate, when appointed, to be a regular member of the board. I'm sorry, of the, of a committee. So for example, Jeff, and it's ju, just given-
Dean, that's in there. That updated Naola, isn't it? Isn't the updated under Board President, is that the one you're talking about?
No, I'm not talking about it, I'm talking about our own, our own policy. I think it should be, I think the policy should be changed, as long as we're on this policy here in the committee.
From, which one, from what do I, I'm sorry?
I think that the, um, the role of Board President being in the, I think it's seventy, one seventy-one point one.
Yes.
Um, that it be clarified to say that if they so choose, the Board President can serve on a committee as a regular member. So they could be a regular voting member of the committee, so that if we have a committee-
So we get to do that?
Yes, right.
So-
Not, not just, so, just so I'm clear, so I can take it back the right way. Not the one where you're the Board President, you go ex officio and only, and, and let's say there are two members on that committee and one member is absent. At that point, I think the language in the policy right now does say you can serve-
Just vote, you can vote.
As, but you're talking about, um, let's say.
Let's say.
We're putting three people and and Jennifer wants to put you are.
Jennifer want, I mean.
Wants to, wants to be a committee member on the personal.
Exactly.
Okay, she could be.
That's right.
You want that language?
I would like that language.
And our language is not clear.
Yes.
Our, our language is not clear and I would like to clear that up.
Okay.
And there was some disagreement about it, but, and and we should decide as a board whether or not we want that to happen.
Sure.
But if we want that to happen, we have to bring us back the language and then we can decide. Um, and and you, if you want to pose two sets of language, one where the president can and the one where the president can't, that's fine. And then we can decide, we can make a decision by adopting whichever policy we want. But I just want that to be in clear in policy.
That's, that's really a really good suggestion because we have done that in the past.
That's right.
I know when Susan was Board President, she ended up having to serve as a committee member because we were short.
Sure, exactly.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, that's a great question. Thank you, Peter. Did you make it on that too?
Yeah, yeah.
The policy should just be clear and it's all.
Yeah, I think that's very helpful. And it's not.
Thank you. Thank you.
My turn?
Yes.
I got to, uh, I got to go to my first meeting of the, I can't remember the acronym for that committee, but it's the new, new teacher committee. And, uh, as those of you who've served on it before, it was a very, very good experience. And, uh, and Peter Kuzma was kind of the coordinator or chair and a couple of other, uh, teachers, three other teachers, I think, were there. And they basically had, uh, uh, all their time and was in very industrially spent on what they're going to do on the opening of school in fall.
Are you in love with it, Jennifer? It's great.
I'm not in love with it, but I thought it was great.
Do you like it or life like it?
Yeah.
What's your happiness factor, do you?
Yeah.
Joyce, could I, don't you eat like every thir- Thursday every month?
I th- I think it's the last Thursday or, I have to check my, uh.
Joyce, could you make sh- cause it's, could you make sure that gets agendaized? Cause we can always take it off, but when it's not agendaized. Thank you.
I, I don't really feel like that left out, but it would be nice to have.
Thank you.
He just broke the law, is what she's saying.
Okay.
He's right.
I'll, I'll regear with Jennifer.
The next. Thank you.
We can s- consider it correspondence.
We can consider it correspondence for for tonight.
Yes.
Thank you, Dean.
Say that that on the agenda and then a lot more people.
All right, that takes us to possible action items, which returns us to some board policies.
Mm-hmm.
Um, field and other district sponsored trips and I believe memorials, is that on the menu? See it? Okay. Let me just click these down and it's open.
There you go.
I'll be right to.
But again, these basically are just two policies that the po- the policy committee brought forward for first read and there were no recommended, recommendations for change.
Exactly, so they've been discussed at the previous meeting and.
All right, we need a motion. For policy two-three-four-zero, field and other district sponsored trips.
Move the policy as presented?
Okay.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. And, and I'm just having a moment, is this a roll call?
No.
No.
Yes, okay.
It's not a roll call unless somebody asked for it.
I figure by Christmas I'm gonna have this today.
Get yours right there to your room, would you?
Thank you, I've got my vote too, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay. Oh, I'm sorry, do that again.
No.
So I'm, I'm sitting here looking at that by, on the bylaws for where we are supposed to be with the policy and not paying attention.
I shouldn't have.
Never mind, aye.
Uh, the motion passes. Thank you. And that takes us to policy, policy five-six, one-zero-point-zero-one, um, alternative expulsion hearing procedure.
No, no, no.
No, I'm sorry.
No, no, sorry.
Uh-oh.
I would like to make a motion that we approve, I don't know where we have.
I apologize, I.
It's, um, nine-one, no, we are.
Need to click further down.
Yeah, we don't even have first or none.
Ninety, nine-one-six-zero.
Nine-one-six oh, memorials.
Yeah, thank you, I just needed to get further.
And that's, that was very minimal changes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yes, we had, uh, hang me a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Again, we didn't make any changes, there weren't any recommendations for changes from the board on the first read. It's exactly what you sought it for.
Right. And we'll vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And the motion carries, thank you.
I can just make a quick comment and and I think part of the confusion that they caught me as well, when you click on the link to the policies that are being revised,
Yes, please.
it takes you to board docs, which is a great tool, but you can also then see everything that the policy committee is working on. And there's some other policies there that are under consideration for the committee, but not for the board yet tonight, so.
Sorry about that.
Yes, fantastic.
Uh.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
But if you're interested in the work of the policy, there it is.
Right. There you go, all right. That takes us to item two, under, uh, possible action items, which is our revised board meeting schedule for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
And just a clarification, the regular meeting schedule is something that has to be approved by the entire board. You generally do that at your organizational meeting. As we mentioned, it was just a a mis- honest mistake, we generally meet the second and fourth Wednesday and somehow grabbed the wrong two Wednesdays on the original document. So we're asking the board to approve the revised schedule, changing those dates to June fourteenth and twenty eighth.
I make a motion that we approve the revised, um, Monona Grove School District Board of Education meeting schedule, which revises the dates in June to the second and fourth, the third, Wednesday.
You did great.
Thank you.
We need a second.
I'll second it, you know.
Thank, thank you, Dean, all those in favor?
Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question.
Last, no, wrong, wrong, that's the next one.
That's the next one?
This is, this is just the change in the two dates.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
So we're good?
This is the easy one.
We're good.
We're good. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, calendar carries. All right, and, just hold on, I need a little clicking. Okay. Now we move to discussion items, and that takes us to our special meetings and workshop dates document.
Do you have hard copies of those of several?
Yeah, it's got the all the rest and you can add four extra.
Can you make a hard copy of that?
So if I may, um, I know that I had made this, um, statement to one individual, um, but I would like to to begin with a practice that I, I'm just gonna borrow from Maury Smith, one of my little heroes. Um, at the beginning of every class, he did a full disclosure of his assumptions and kind of perspective on his class cause he wanted to be transparent about where he was coming from as an educator. Um, on this particular item, I also want to do something similar and just share with you the intention of the work that, um, Mr. Olson and I have been doing about the meeting schedule and Ms. Hamm. Gotta bring that in for sure. Um, so the intention is that there is, and Dan, please, um, chime in anytime. Uh, there's an intention to have some stability and predictability with, um, core pieces of our academic year as far as reports or particular items or actions that the board must take. So, um, some of these pieces we're already aware of, we just want to build them into our calendar. Um, we also have, um, board reports that from time to time, people would like to hear or there's, um, a need for that information. Uh, there's an event, there's, um, something that that occurs that brings that information into scope. Um, and so we're trying to look at a balance between, um, having some efficiencies, but also honoring um, and having that, um, capacity to bring in issues and reports as needed. Um, so the other piece that I want to bring in here too is that there was no intention, is no intention on my part to limit or to squelch or to, um, dictate, um, in the minutia of everything that we do across an entire year. This was really seen as a way to start, um, and to get us to a place where now we can share it with the entire board and look at, um, adjustments, exceptions, um, pieces that we can do along the way. So I just wanted to be upfront about the process that has been happening. Thank you.
What document are we on now?
It was a log.
Sure, so this is the Monona Grove School District Board of Education meeting schedule. And this is across, uh, an enti- entire, um, year, did.
Oh, no, 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 we're here, we're on this one first.
They're kind of confused.
Not the, not the, yeah, this one, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Does Dean have it?
Yeah, it's, it's still, I gotta, I.
You're good, okay. Susan?
Well, I, I just want to ask, I, I personally and professionally want to thank Jennifer for, um, for giving us.
I just want to make sure.
Put this material together. Understanding that it, that this kind of schedule might be challenging, particularly in the summer months, that's why it's under discussion, I'm sure. Um, but effectively, if you look at this, this is a list of the things that the board basically said to our new board president in the last three weeks. We want to do, we want to get this done, we think it's important, we think it's important to set board goals. We need, we think it's important to continue to review our expulsion process. We think it's important to do the superintendent evaluation, because it's kind of required by law. And, and Jennifer took the time and the energy to try and put this into a way that we could do this work. We know as a board that when we try and do it for an hour, from six to seven, we have been one hundred percent unsuccessful in that ability to finish the projects during that period of time. So she's worked hard, I think, it looks like, to help us do that. So I really, really appreciate the work. Understanding that the dates, you just chose some because we basically said maybe Wednesday's work to you guys. You chose those, we may find tonight that not all those dates work. But I would strongly support all of these items that you put on here and making sure we schedule more time to do this. And I think the approach of trying to schedule time separate from regular board meetings, I mean, we might even get out at a decent time tonight because we're focusing on one project and having a good start-finish time. So I really appreciate you doing this work.
Regarding the special meeting with expulsion hearing officer. We have to approve an expulsion hearing officer before we can have a meeting with an expulsion hearing officer, right? In July, we approved.
Correct.
So I would, I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves because I'm hoping at some point, in my career on the board, I'll be able to talk sanity. We won't have an expulsion hearing officer to meet with, but realizing that probably isn't gonna happen at this point. But still, we don't have an expulsion hearing officer at this point until we reapprove him in July.
And I appreciate if I could comment on that. Um, but the reality is to get it on the schedule, we can't wait till July, we'll never find a date.
So then we shouldn't have a vote, right?
Well, if if the board votes in July not to use a hearing officer, we'll cancel the meeting. That's pretty, you know, simple, but to try to schedule one at that late date would be difficult. And I guess what I heard when we had our meeting with Bob Butler, it was suggested by him that we have an orientation with the hearing officer so we can be clear on expectations of the board. And so that would be the the purpose of, you know, that meeting. So, but that's, I guess, up for discussion tonight, um, if you still want to do that.
Well, uh, when I see the addition of, uh, six, eight additional meetings, um, I, my suggestion would be is that we end up with more than this anyway, as the d- as the year would go on. Um, my suggestion is, is that I, I, I think that, uh, uh, in, uh, with Butler and with other opportunities that we've had, uh, I personally don't need to have another session with the hearing officer. I'm, I'm good to hire, to vote, to hire them. And, uh, unless we're changing hearing officers and that sort of thing. Uh, on two other items, and tell me if I'm wrong on this, on the one that, uh, in which we would be, I didn't bring my glasses, so I'm trying to read red on white. Um, the, uh, the consulting interviews and the, uh, the rep interviews that have to do with the construction project, I, I would suggest we, we go about that and simply have a subcommittee meet with them and, uh, and make a recommendation to the board as we did with the first, when we adopted them. And that, and I think that avoids another night out for, for, uh, at, at least, uh, four people. And, uh, and it would seem to me that, uh, on the ones of the superintendent evaluation, uh, I would hope that, uh, when we come to that, those would be constructive meetings in which we're dealing with the evaluation and not dealing with the, the, uh, the actual criteria or form of the evaluation. And if, and if we have to do that, I would suggest that there be a subcommittee, a smaller committee work to present it with the whole board because I, I have not found, I have not found developing, developing pieces of paper, uh, very effective with seven or eight people, uh, working with it. So, uh, I'd like to find a way to, uh, two, four, six, eight, I'd like to find a way to, uh, I think the board goals are, is important. I'd like to change that because I know I won't be here on that date. But, uh, that's my con- that's my contribution to it. I, I think that, uh, I think that smaller groups can do some of the, uh, the draft work, uh, for the entire board or, uh, and, uh, make a recommendation to the board on, on, uh, four or five of those.
Thank you.
My comment is I think the goals are important, and I think we should not wait till August to continue the work that we've been doing with board goals. I'd like to see that moved up.
I'm not saying that they're not important items, I just, I just simply saying that, uh, there, there's a whole lot that can be done with two or three people at a committee and to be trust their work and, and, uh, and a recommendation and, uh, not have to deal with seven.
Susan, I'll take the.
I will say, um, those are in, interesting comments, I appreciate those thoughts from everybody. Um, can we get a thumbs up on support for having a meeting to do board goals? Because the, my impression is the one thing we did not finish this year was clear articulation of our board goals. So, um, first of all, do we want to do it and then second of all, then we ask the second question, kind of thumbs up. Um, are we willing to commit two hours to that process? Cause it minimally takes two hours. Maybe four. So I would, I would, um, I strongly support this board setting three board goals for this year. And, um, if we want to use a subcommittee to do, remember we did a survey and then we could have a subcommittee that basically brings the top three things off of that survey if we're willing to do the survey again. But we could give the subcommittee the process and then we could come in and build the calls to support. But I support doing that. Um, and, um, again, it would be nice to move that up in the August.
So we've had two voices supporting our work on board goals in some way and moving them up in the calendar. Um, do you have perspectives that you care to share?
Mine? I, 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 I think board goals are important, but I, I'd like to, uh, I, I don't find them very useful to, to start with a rough draft, to develop the constitution, so to speak, with a, with a group of eight and think, making. and think, thinking unrealistically that we can do it in two hours. This board has never started from scratch on anything that would take less than four or six.
I would point out that our last time we met about board, board goals, we met for an hour and we got exactly accomplished what we wanted to do, which was the definition of that first goal. Thanks, I think, to the leadership from Lisa helping keep us on track.
But she said to me with this twice on her staff time.
I'm not, I, I don't have a sense that we have a, a, the, the total package of board goals, I think.
No, we don't.
I, I think what we did is we, we worked on the format of the idea of some goals, but I never saw a finished product come out of any of those sessions, even though they were instructive to me of the elements that ought to go into the goal.
I agree.
Okay, so I'll ask the question, do we wanna set board goals this summer? I would say yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna set board goals? Okay, and then, Peter, I have this question. Do we wanna, do we want a subcommittee to put the package together so when the board comes in, they're gonna have?
Well, I think we have a, a, a process set up and we have, you know, work on, on three and we simply just had to, we refined the first one and we just had to refine the second two. And I would take up where we left off, again, you know, there's no huge rush. But we do wanna take step, and we wanna take steps at a, at a time. But we do wanna take continuous steps and I would take up items two and three, doing one meeting, two meetings, whatever time we feel we have.
Can I make a suggestion? I would suggest that Susan Fox, our current president, and you sit down and put together a, a, a rough draft of what those goals ought, ought to look like and the proper format as Lisa taught us and, and then let the board discuss them and slightly advise them.
He doesn't, he doesn't have a meeting.
I, I trust you to do a heck of a good job on that.
Because, well, again, one of the questions I have too, Dean, is, I mean, it's a new year. We may have different things we wanna do. I'm not sure the stuff we were mulling through last year is right for us this year. So that brings you to the question, I agree with Dean. Why don't we let Peter and Susan Fox and Jennifer get together and then make the decision, do we wanna do this survey again? Do you then wanna bring us the top three things off the survey or the top five things and have us pick three? And then that subcommittee actually, do you think, Peter, that would work? Could write the action plan?
If I could, if I could suggest. The process is as much about us setting an example and us doing the work and, and working with the process and, and understanding the process than everybody else uses, rather than having absolutely the best goals at any given time. Because we're never going to be able to keep up, work on a pace that keeps up with that. And I think we should start with, take where we are, the work that we've done already, and move beyond that. Because if we start over, it'll be just another, I mean, we'll take another six hours back. So, and I'm fine with a group of us, and I think that could be done, a subgroup of us getting together and sort of taking what we have and, and fashioning it into, into goals to bring back to the board. But I don't think we should restart the process. And, and what I think, the way we, I think the way we should adapt this is that we should adopt, take the work we've done, go with three goals, work through those for a year, and then at the end of each year, drop one and add one. Or something about that process, just so that we can keep on the, keep on the track, keep going, keep something fresh, but keep the workload to a low, to a workable level.
I, 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 I would, I would be happy to, to work in a group of the whole board to do that, but I'd like to see in front of me a reasonably good and rough draft of where you'd like to begin on that, that we could, we could fine tune it and, you know, and get, get measurable objectives and all that kinda stuff, you know, on it. But I, I don't want to start, I don't wanna start with seven or eight people meeting on those nights. I'd like to get us engaged at, at a higher level.
Well, I could just comment with regard to using the survey data that you use with the school perceptions, you know, board tool. So we, the data that we have from there was basically just, you know, how you responded. And that was something that we received from the WSB at no charge as part of, you know, our, our membership there. I just learned this past week that school perceptions actually will give you a report on that survey, like they do our other surveys, showing a lot more detailed comparison on our board's responses to the average responses of other boards around the state. They never made us aware that was available, so I contacted them, in fact, I ordered the reports.
They actually did tell us that, this board a year ago. Yeah, they did, at least through, in WSB they did, we talked about that. But at this time, the board wanted, kind of the leadership wanted to do that, thought, thought the process would be good for us. I think we struggled through that process and we've had to use a fair amount of staff time to do that. So I would strongly support using the part two through that. And I think if we're gonna learn the process, it doesn't take that long to do the survey. We should update what we're doing, get a fresh start, write a process as we do this and say, okay, we all took the survey, then we did this, then we went to WSB, we got the report back, they showed us the top three things and we built an actual plan off those. And then we know every year that's what we do. Your goals may be the same every year, but they could be different every year as well, Dean. So if you do a strategic plan one year, I'm gonna be interested in being a piece of that. I think our, our data goal, we don't know who we are and we didn't even pick the one we're most concerned about, so.
What's the, can I, should we get a consensus of the board, what is, what?
Just the board goal piece.
Should we? The goal, board goal piece, do we wanna start with the sur- new survey and relook at that from that point? Or should we take the work, based on last year's survey and work with that? I would say that we start, continue where we are, because I think they're close enough and I don't think they'll change that much. Does anybody else have an opinion on it?
I would, I would advocate for starting fresh, doing the new survey and using the WSB support piece to help us get to a point where we can fill the ball. We've already struggled with the previous stuff, we spent months and hours trying to do it, let's just start.
May I, may I clarify what I was trying to say? So the, the survey you already took, they could provide an analysis of that data.
Okay, so let's do that, that's a great in-between, great.
You know, right.
I mean, we've done it ourselves, basically.
I, I guess I would point out, and, and I've been leading this charge off topic. We really shouldn't be discussing in such detail the board goals, we should be talking about the schedule.
You guys can share yourself.
Okay, Dean, I can share myself.
I think the nature of this discussion supports my suggestion that a subcommittee get together and even discuss.
All right, I have the consensus on this one. I'll discuss it with you, Jennifer, we can go over what we've got and take a look at what, what we've got.
Okay, well, let me be clear, if you have a subcommittee, that's, an ad hoc committee that has to be created by the board and has to be noticed, and so if you wanna have a subcommittee, I'll be glad to work with Jennifer to put on the next agenda to discuss, but then you'd have to take action to create such a committee.
Okay, and then, okay, so we said we, we do wanna work on board goals. When do we wanna work on those? Right now we have August scheduled.
I would just say to the board president, given the input that there's sort of a consensus, we wanna work on that. Look at the schedule, we'll see what you can do to give it up.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take it back and re, reshuffle, so to speak, yeah.
I'm not trying to be obstructive, because I think we ought to do it, I just think that we ought to streamline it.
I hear you, I'm hearing you.
Gotcha.
Okay, so the other suggestion which ties in with Jared's work then is to create a subcommittee that would help us meet with the architectural services and then later with the general contractor and those interviews. Is that an ad hoc and then does that need to also come before the board?
Correct.
Okay?
And I would s-
Yes, Dean?
And I would suggest that subcommittee be, should be three people who have worked with that long-range planning committee. Some, I, I'd be happy to serve on that and, and, you know, Carrie was on it and Jeff was on it and Susan Fox was on.
I attended all the meetings, so I'd also be happy to give back.
Sure.
Jared, the dates that we have, do those seem reasonable, so those we can keep?
For sure, we have to keep the July twelfth one.
Yep.
Because that is physically been published with the potential people that would be applying, so. The other one we can be flexible on.
Okay, thank you for identifying that, please. All right, sounds like we have more conversations. Yay, okay, about this document. Thank you for the feedback.
I wanna thank you again for this work because we need to do this work, we said we need to.
It's nice to have it and the work's gotta be done, I just wanna streamline it. And I have to say, I can't hear August sixth, you know.
The sixteenth?
Fifteenth, probably. I mean, I'm from the, the ninth to the, uh.
Is that July?
Huh?
July?
August.
August, the ninth of the what?
I was on about all day.
I know Susan and I are gonna be done by the one and a half. So do we want any other feedback from the board for availability or do we wanna manage that in a different?
I guess, and my suggestion would be that we come back with revised, you know, potential dates. I think it's always difficult when we sit here and try to choose a date at one time.
Yep, okay.
So effectively, August sixteenth was one of the bad dates, is that right? And, and there was some, can the census not try to move that up anyway?
Correct, I think we've already got that in our, our notes for, no, no, but we'll, we'll come back, but a revision of some kind.
It's up there.
Okay. Are we going here?
You should at least make sure I'm clear how, what the intent is of that document.
Okay. I'm not sure. Yeah, this is a little bit, it's, I'm not sure. I mean, I have a physical copy, sorry.
Sounds like we're turning the next one future agenda items.
Oh, hello, hello, Houston, thank you. Okay. All right, thank you for your patience. Thank you. All right, that takes us to future agenda items, which ties us into a more extensive calendar document. And, um, well, how should we start here?
Yeah, well, I, I think you've seen this document before, so it's one that I've always worked with, with the board president, Joyce, to make sure that we are not missing agenda items and try to map out for the year the things that we know are gonna come up. And I think more importantly, or just as importantly, at the very end is a place where I keep the list of possible reports that have been requested of board members. And so that's one of the things I think that we're, we've struggled about. Okay, are there some of those things that we can combine together into a single report? Are some of those things, can they be answered through, you know, written correspondence versus a formal report? And, and so that's something I think we still need to, to work through. I always review those with the administrative team about, you know, how we might do that, bring back suggestions to the board president, so.
Was that the list we dealt with months ago? I think when you were ill, we dealt with that list. Is that, that those are all good reports that we wanted to have?
We didn't deal with it.
No, we didn't.
That's gonna get me out of my.
I, I think, I'll, to be frank, I think we've always struggled with this a little bit, you know, as to being clear and consensus about the interest of the entire board, what are the things that are really important? You know, there's certain things, whether the board requests or not, that I, I'll try to bring forward that I think you need to get a report on or that would be helpful, beneficial. I think when there's individual items, if we can try to combine those together so we're not doing, you know, thirty reports sometimes, but, but I, as I said, I always keep a running tab as well and, and will always be checking in with, with, you know, Jennifer as I did with Peter and, and, so that, that's just a list.
Well, it, it, it seems to me that, that I, I remember once we talked about reports and we got into a melee on, you know, which were important and that sort of thing. But it would seem to me if you, if, if you could take a list like that and maybe just send us out a, the shopping list and we could say, gee, you're, you're missing something like this or that. And, and then go back and say, you know, are those things that can be given in a memorandum? Once a year and which ones go in a plastic binder? And I think those are, you know, I mean, we get reports on, we, we got a report tonight on open enrollment that were sometime during the year we have, is that, is that the same classification as, as the maintenance report or?
You know what I mean, there's, I don't know where they begin or end. Yeah, and that's what I made, the attempt on that last page to, to kinda keep a list of the annual ones that we always are gonna do every year and which ones, you know, might be, might change, you know, from year to year.
Susan? Well, begin, when I, when I basically look at the agenda items, I see the things that have to be there, you know, budget updates. I'm not seeing those things. Again, I think this is a great discussion and I'll tell you a perfect example. I had advocated for having the model U N come and talk to us because it talks a lot about things that kids learn and do in high school and then it exemplifies that in this program. And nobody was really very interested in that, so. I guess my question, it says other possible special reports and annual reports. I mean, I'm really not seeing anywhere that clearly talks about the academic reporting and that's what I really, and maybe it's here, I just don't see it. Maybe if we highlight that and remove or something? So for instance, tonight, it looks like we had a report on the twenty sixteen strategic plan goals, cycle two progress. I didn't really get a report, you said, we're gonna, here's, here's the document, do you have any questions? Then nobody really reported it out to me, they kind of said, here's what I've done, here's what we're doing, here's where we wanna go. And you said you'll get a report in August, so that was basically the report I got. So if I looked at that, I thought, hmm, I didn't believe. So, I think it's, so for instance, what a lot of other school districts do is they say, they're basically, the board agrees the five things we want reported about this year, and they pick those and they say, then you figure out when to report on. So we want a one-year report on the strategic plan, I think, and you said we're gonna get that in August, okay? So is there something in the August that says, report out on the strategic plan?
Yes.
Okay, and that's where?
August ninth.
Okay, perfect. So maybe, so way, we could fold that kind of thing out rather than these approvals of the stuff we do every, like approving board case sites and we, but this, it's also mixed stuff then.
Right, so if I may, um, this document serves several purposes. So one of them is to actually map out annually what we must do, right? And then that allows us to see what we can do, what we must. Right, and then that allows us to see what we can do, what we might do with the remaining chunks of time and energy and staffing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it serves that function as well as, right, um, the board trying to decide what other information do we not need or, you know, do we wanna call upon? So, um, so that might be a little tricky 'cause the document is serving multiple purposes.
See, so for instance, in, I looked at this and I, I'll be the first to say it, it was just too much and it was hard for me to pull out things. So is the annual bullying report on here? You're gonna say yes, and we're gonna tell you right where it is. And, and so that's one of the things we know we have to have every year. I think one of the controversies about that is the information that we're getting and the depth that we get of them. Um, I'm, I'm not, I, I was having trouble finding kind of that acad- the academic reporting out pieces. And maybe what would be helpful would be have Lisa and Krista make a list of the things they wanna report out, that they think are important for us to know.
And that's what we always have done.
And we're, but that, but, but that's not on this list.
Right, so what we have here.
So I can't see when that's coming or, but that's.
Well, that's the August ninth report. Okay, every, we did, so we've got a new strategic plan, we're tying our school improvement plans, our district, you know, goals, all that to the strategic plan. So that will be a data report. Now, if there's things in addition to that.
What about the bullying report, where's that, and that's required by policy?
Um.
That should, it would be helpful that if you're gonna in.
Okay, any behavioral data is, is embedded as well?
Not in the strategic plan.
Sure.
I don't think that was the intent with the policy, but we can talk about, Dan, we can just, we can do this, we don't need to.
Okay.
Jennifer, I'm, I'm just gonna say again, I'm not seeing, when you look at the list at the end.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, and it basically gives us a list of things this board has said we'd like to hear about. The gifted and talented program, that's an academic piece. The other thing is, we get a report from MG twenty-one every year, we get a report from the teacher mentoring group every year. If we're gonna put that stuff on, let's put it on, where do you wanna see it? Basically, we've got, I, I think Jennifer articulated extremely well, and that is, we, we're seeing what we must do, but I'm not seeing the things that we also wanted.
Right, so, and again, at the end, when you see the list of other possible reports, those are all a list of things that individual board members have requested. We need to get consensus on what the board wants with those individual requests.
And I, I think I mentioned this earlier, I do feel that there's a, a tension amongst the seven members as to what is priority and what is not priority. So, um, I think perhaps what we need to have, um, at least maybe some conversation about is, like, what is the threshold? So for instance, one criteria is, in what ways does it connect into strategic plan for our district? So that we can see the pieces throughout the district connected to our own work as well. Um, to what extent does it connect to student achievement, right, i- directly or as close as possible, right? So with, that we see that that information is, is relevant and powerful and interesting to our communities. Um, if one board member is interested and the other six say, eh, I'm good, um, are there other avenues or ways for you to continue that conversation or to get that information um, so that you feel satisfied or, um, that that issue has been resolved in some way? So it may be that not every time it rises to the occasion of a whole board report for the entire board. Um, so those are pieces that are in conversation, um, right now.
Um, uh, there's, boy, reports to the board from the staff involve always a lot of time and effort.
Yeah.
And shouldn't be done lightly. And we try as a board to be accommodating with every board member, but I think we try too hard to be accommodating with every board member. And what I think we should do is just take that list and we should look at them one by one and we should all vote on it. And say, yes, we want this, or this, and we don't, don't want that. Um, you know, if one board, I understand some board, one board member may be passionate about a particular item, but if the six of us are not,
Right.
I mean, that's, the, that's the consensus and we just need, need to, you know, make that decision and move on.
What's the threshold?
For a board, I think for a board report, um, for a port, of the staff from the board, um, should be a, a majority of the members.
Four to three.
Because, yeah, because that involves, that's how the board makes decisions, 'cause that involves staff. Um, if, if it's a discussion item for the board, if it's just the board wants that discussion item, then a smaller number, uh, is fine. Um, uh, you know, it, it, you know, with the lower thresholds, two or three members of the board suggest we have a discussion on X. I think actually if two, two members of the board suggest that we should have a discussion as board members about something, then that's fine, put on the, on the, uh, agenda. But if it's a report, I think it should be, uh, there should be consensus, there should be a majority, um, support for that. Um, with the exception of if it's something that superintendent and the board president agree that we should hear or have, then that, I think, is the discussion. Then you guys have the discussion and put on, on the agenda.
I agree, well said. That's why this is my example, 'cause I was the only one, that was a really good example, I was the only one that really kinda thought about that and it just never moved forward, that was fine. Absolutely.
And, and then, and, and then that gives you another, another path.
Absolutely.
If the superintendent and, and the board president agree, well, one of the things you can do if you want a particular thing on the agenda is just lobby the, the board president. It's the board president's that, to, to talk to the superintendent and bring it back. So you do have another path, or we have a path where we can, and I think, but I think just in the interest of openness, deciding what we're doing is, you know, working together, we should look at a bunch of these and say, yeah, up and down, who wants it? And have an up and down vote.
Good process.
Okay?
And then, maybe you have some other questions too? At some point, will we just start with the list at the end?
I would, yeah, we can start with the list at the end, where's the list laying on, let's see, let's see.
Yeah, and I could put it on a separate document, give you an opportunity to make sure we didn't miss anything.
I would do it tonight, we could, we could take three at each meeting or five at each meeting and do it in five minutes and.
Kinda check it out.
And then that would, and then.
Mm-hmm, I would have, I would have the superintendent edit this list first and decide what you're gonna do anyway and which you're, which you're not gonna do under any circumstances.
Yeah. Okay. I, I can do that, I go over with Jennifer on the ones that we agree we wanna break for and identify those.
Yeah, perfect.
And then the ones that we really wanna make sure there's board consensus.
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll just break it and then put it, put that in the discussion section.
Put that. Give us the top ten.
Okay.
I see, I see a difference between a full board report and a discussion, right?
Right.
Like, there's, there's a certain, say, we need, say, Chris or somebody here
Yes.
to help us with our discussion because, like, she could have, but we wouldn't want, but a full board discussion would be like a presentation.
Getting a lot of work done.
Yeah.
But if, that's different than a discussion on a topic, 'cause we would need the person there because to guide us along and answer our questions.
Yes, when.
It's two different things, right, I mean, yeah.
Right, if I may, but I mean, the threshold is when we're asking somebody to prepare a report. I think that that's a threshold that we should be circumstantic about crossing, we should have a higher threshold for it. I think what might be a good suggestion would be, uh, to reserve quarterly, maybe, um, a space on the agenda for a blank placeholder in that annual agenda for board, uh, uh, driven reports, reports from something that the board is, is interested in that wants to hear, it would not be the same year to year or whatever, it's a topic, it's a topic that the board picks. Let's say, but this is in schedule.
How do reports deserve to be weekly, monthly or annually?
That's right. But, but have, you know, parent, Dan and I were interested in, um, I, well, I know, for example, with discipline expulsion updates, that's one. And that's something that bubble up from the board is interested in it, it's something I think we have once, we're doing, and we, so I know it's already on the schedule.
Yeah.
But I think if we held out, I don't know, twice a year or quarterly or something like that, a space that says, okay, you know, the first month of the quarter, we're gonna have the first meeting first month, if there's a space for something that the board is really interested in outside of the usual annual stuff.
Are we good?
I think we're good.
I think we got our walk-in papers here, or direction, there we go, um.
Yeah.
Walking papers.
Walk-in papers are different, yeah.
That's why I said, I said, our direction, direction, I, I veered.
Yes.
Quick, get back on the road, alright, um, does that take us to future meetings?
I have a couple of things that weren't on there. Um, we talked about last time, the student resource officer statistics.
The SRO.
Oh, I didn't see that on there, maybe it's on there.
Yes. It is, yeah, yeah.
It is. Also, and I've discussed them together, I would like to take a, get a committee together and relook at our behavior plan, 'cause I think our behavior plan does need.
Take a look at, okay.
Our behavior plan, overall.
District behavior.
District behavior plan, yes.
Not the board's behavior.
No, well, I'd give up on that. But, uh, yeah, the district, the district behavior plan, beyond the policy committee.
The district.
I've seen some things in my research that, that district.
Uh-oh.
I, I, I don't know if it's appropriate to discuss, it's not agenda, okay, well, we'll, we'll have a follow-up discussion.
Um.
Well, we've, I don't know if it's appropriate to discuss, it's not agenda, okay, well, we'll, we'll have a follow-up discussion.
Well, I mean, you could comment, is that, what do you think of that idea?
I don't know what you mean by district behavior plan.
District behavior, rethink how we're doing things.
Like.
S- suspensions, expulsion, insubstantial, everything, rewrite the whole thing, I think that's what it is.
We don't have in writing criteria, I mean, oh, what we have in policy, so you're talking about the policy.
Right, so we need, yeah, we need to redo the policy, but beyond the policy committee,
Okay.
I think we need to involve some parents, teachers, principals, and I like, redo it, 'cause I think it's wrong. And I was just giving an example, we, I saw in my research for what we were supposed to do tonight, that we've suspended people for language and that if you're suspending people for language, you're doing a wrong, that, that, that's, yeah.
I, I need to thank you, but I need you to, um, wait a little, but it's on the list.
So. It's on this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so future meetings, thank you all, yeah, okay. So may, do, do you want me to read these out loud, I'm happy to, or we can just go?
When's the next one?
With posted?
When's the next special meeting?
There's a, our special meeting is May thirty-first here in the district office at seven P M.
Can it stop on that one, so we have it at seven, that was a request, one of the board members who's not present that preferred to wait till seven.
Oh, yeah.
If, I'm gonna follow up and find out if, I'm thinking it'd be nice to bill start a little earlier if the other board, if everyone's available. So for those of you that are here tonight, could you be available to start before seven?
Yes, I could.
Next Wednesday?
I, I.
Next Wednesday, it's thirty-first.
Yeah.
There is a retirement party that evening, which I do plan to attend, um, but it starts at four. So I would think as long as we can accommodate board members that we wanna attend that from four to seven.
Okay.
What time are you thinking?
Um, well, no, earlier than six, that's the earliest we generally start.
Because it doesn't make any sense to postpone it because these people couldn't be here and they'll start up when they are gonna be here.
Ri- right, so that'd be contingent upon everyone being able to make it, that's what it, so, for, I like, board member did not say they, they prefer to wait till seven, so I wanna find out if, if it is possible. If it's not possible, we'll stick with seven, so we'll confirm in writing to you between now and then.
Okay.
Alright, and the personnel committee maybe, here's a.
Tomorrow?
Six, tomorrow at seven.
Six.
Yes, six o'clock.
Six?
Tomorrow, okay.
I think so.
Well, I broke down both and then crossed out seven, so, yeah, I think.
We set the door shut today, six o'clock.
Six, yeah.
Yeah.
And could I go back one more time to the thirty-first?
Sure.
Could everyone here, what is the, um, earliest everyone here could be in attendance on the thirty-first?
Probably six thirty.
Okay, that's perfect, just so we don't have to go bouncing back and forth.
Three thirty. Maybe five.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll confirm, either it'll be a six thirty or seven eighty.
I can be here at your, at your pleasure.
Oh. No walk-in papers for you, Dean. Alright, are we good? We're good, we need a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Backwards.
Okay, thank you, everybody.